Mr. City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, December 10, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by ordering the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright? Here.
Council members, just for your information, Councilman Edmonds will not be here for the work session. He's trying to get here for the seven.
Okay.
But may not make it for that either.
I want to give you an update on the CAFER. And the presentation will be done by our CFO, Phil Swindell. And let me give you some background. As you'll see from the presentation, and as I've told you before, both orally and in writing, the state code requires all local governments to have an audit done by an ALSA, an auditing firm, accountant, secretary. And that auditor present his report by December 31st. I alerted you last month, I think it was on the 20th of November, that the prospects of getting the CAFER completed by December 31st was very problematic. The reason is, is that our CAFER contains the schools. The schools are a component unit of our CAFER. Certain of their numbers are in our CAFER. And their numbers have to match up with our numbers. And we're working to that end. So, without going into all of Carol's presentation, I want to ask Carol to come up and do the update as where we stand.
Good evening.
Most of the introduction, I think John's already covered, we, the schools are a component unit of the city, and as such, there is certain of their financial information that needs to be incorporated into the city's CAFER. And any unspent funds remaining on the school side, we need to come back to the city, need to be reflected in the same amount in both the city and the school CAFER.
If you'll go back to that one slide, here's an important point. The CAFER should accurately present the financial statements and condition of not only the city, but of the schools. And if it doesn't, that's a finding, and it's a major finding. It's not a minor finding. Because that's what the financial statements are about. They're to give the reader a true indication of what the financial condition is, position of that particular unit.
So, the amount that's due to the city would show up in both the school's CAFER and the city's CAFER in the exact same amount. And as I think we told you at the last meeting, the city and the schools have the same audit firm and same audit partner, and he's concerned and wants to be sure that those amounts are the same on both sides. There are several state code sections that cover how funds are appropriated and the school board funding. The first is, well, this is related to the audit, which John, I think, went over. The state code requires that the audit firm auditing the city present the detailed report to City Council by the end of December. The next code section is 58.1-3005, which speaks to the requirement that no funds be expended without an appropriation by City Council. And this applies to both the city and the schools. This code section also speaks to the requirement of appropriation. And you can see in the highlighted text that no money should be paid out until there's first been an appropriation by City Council. Section 22.1-100 pertains to the school board. And it clearly states that any sums that are local money that is unexpended at the end of any year shall come back to the city to be appropriated either back to the schools or for other purposes.
Carol, can you go back to the slide that's got the little table in it to chart? Where the holdup is, is trying to get these two numbers to match. The amount that we will carry in our financial statements, it says amount due from the schools to match in the school's CAFER, the amount due to the city. And right now, there's a gap. And we'll get into the details of that gap. Our Xs are bigger than their Xs by 4.2 million dollars. And so this is to give you an update on how we can bring that down so that X equals X, that these dollar amounts are the same.
So, as John mentioned, we have, we've calculated the amount that is due back to the city based on the school's draft CAFER, which we did not receive until the 16th of November. And our review of that CAFER shows that there are funds over and above what the schools have already returned to the city that are due. This was the calculation that we did originally as of November 20th. And at that time, we were showing a total amount due back to the city of approximately 13.5 million dollars. And the schools had not returned about 4.1 million of that amount.
In a quick way to see what makes up this number, it's the 1.3 in encumbrances and the 2.7 in the textbook. And remember, an encumbrance should not show up in the CAFER. Because an encumbrance is holding money for an expenditure that happened in the prior year, the year that just ended. Remember my description the last time.
So, you're saying they got 1.3 million dollars of bills from last year that haven't been paid?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Alright.
We're asking them to explain their encumbrance, because remember, you buy, you order a pen...
It's gotta be tied to something.
Let me explain.
Okay.
You order a pen on the 10th of June. The pen comes in, you know the invoice is not going to come in until July. And so you encumber $10 to pay that invoice. When that invoice comes in, you take that $10 and you pay the vendor. So at the end of the accrual period, which is 45 days, there's no money in your cash box.
It's about August 15th, it should be zero.
That's right. Because all the bills have been paid. Okay. And what they're saying is that there were encumbrances of 1.3 million. And we met with the School Finance Committee last week, and I sent you a memo of that. We've asked them, they say that there are some bills that relate to that, and Carol's going to go into that a little bit, that, yeah, they can tie it back to an expenditure.
Can you speak apart about the auditor?
For me?
Not the auditor, but the company that's doing the books for them.
Well, remember, management is responsible for preparing the financial statements. So we're responsible, me and Carol, for doing the financial statements. And the same is true for the schools. The school administration is responsible for preparing their books. The auditor comes in to test whether or not those financial statements fairly present the financial condition. And they do that by doing tests. They don't look at every transaction. And they determine what's material. They're not going to chase down, if you bought a thousand stamps, did you, where are those thousand stamps? That's an awful waste of their time. And so there's a question of what's material. But management is responsible for preparing the financial statements, not the auditor.
And they wouldn't sign off on the CAFER?
Well, they will give an opinion about the financial statement. And the worst opinion to get is one that says these financial statements don't adequately or adroitly or fairly represent the financial condition of the entity that we're auditing.
And so, as John said, the major differences are, one, the encumbrances. And the way the accrual process works, if you order something and the invoice doesn't come in until after the end of the year, and the city does this as well, we accrue that expense back to the prior fiscal year. So by the time you close out the books, anything that really was a true bill of the prior fiscal year should be reflected in the actual expenditure numbers for that year. Encumbrances by their very nature do not constitute an expenditure, and there's a note to that effect in the school's financial statement. So that, and therefore, does not meet the definition of being spent per the state code and as unspent funds, that's money that needs to come back to the city. The schools are looking at going back and revisiting their invoices to see if there are additional costs that they somehow did not accrue to the prior fiscal year. We understand from our audit partner that they have identified about $400,000 that is, of this amount that was spending that didn't get accrued. But we've asked for a list of all those invoices and the details to support that and have not yet gotten that. The other area is the textbook fund. And you may recall from the memo, this is a fund that has never had any general fund transfers made to it, the school's general fund, until the last two fiscal years, when a significant amount of money was transferred and was not needed for expenditures. The school board has adopted a resolution acknowledging that this is money that needs to come back to the city and has asked council to consider re-appropriating that amount. So this, so as of November 20th, we were at 4.1 million dollars. One of the issues that we had had some concern about is the fact that when the school board made a request to the city and to City Council in May of last year, they asked the council appropriate 1.8 million dollars for two roof projects, one at Norcombe High School, one at Churchill and Primary. And that appropriation was made for the fiscal year 14 budget in May of this year. And we've subsequently learned that both of those projects, one was completed in October of 2012, over six months prior to the request being made, and the other was substantially complete at the time the request was made, and the final payment was made in June. So we have a question as to why that request was made, and we have not yet gotten a response to that either. This is a memo that the school's Director of Finance sent to the superintendent explaining, there was some money that was spent after the beginning of fiscal year 14 of about 115,000. It was a little less than 115,000, actually. And the explanation here shows projects that are not those two roof projects. And as such, they were not projects that were authorized by City Council. They total about $68,000. And since they weren't projects that were appropriated by council, that's money that needs to come back to the city as well. So we've updated this chart, and you can see that we're now at approximately 4.2 million dollars that is due back to the city. We sent an email to the superintendent and their Director of Finance last week outlining what the difference is. There's some other differences in the timing of how they booked certain items. I have not yet heard a response to that, but we are, you know, we are anxious to get everything wrapped up so that we can finalize the CAFER as soon as possible, and we will keep council informed as to our progress. With that, if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Assuming, I mean, I certainly want to assume that the professional staff on both sides will figure this out sooner than later. Does that mean that we will have to have a special call meeting to accept the CAFER before the end of the year?
I don't think it's going to get resolved. In fact, I know it's not going to get resolved before, now and then. And this won't be the first time. It'll be the first time for me. But this city, I think, in recent history has considered the CAFER in January in other localities. That doesn't make it right. I mean, I am not happy about this at all.
Why can't it be resolved?
Let's go back to that chart.
I got that part. I'm somewhere.
The only way it can be resolved is they send the money, right?
No, go back to the table. This is really simple. These two numbers have got to match up. And you've got to have agreement on both sides that that's what the number is.
But aren't there statutes that mandate?
Well, and to answer your question, right now, what's due is almost 4.2 million dollars.
Well, what we'd need to show in the CAFER is the full amount that was due.
Yeah, which is the 13. But right now, what's being worked, can we go to the last updated, alright, this.
4.1.
Now, the school board, as Carol said, took action last Thursday to return the textbook. Okay? There's another set of funds, and it's student activity funds in the amount of almost 390,000 bucks, it's like 388,000. What the school board did was put nearly three-quarters of a million dollars into the various accounts of their general fund money. Well, that's local money. It's the money that you appropriated. And it's easy to get that confused. Well, wait a minute, is this from selling candy or bake sale that the students do? No, this is general fund, local money, that they allocated to each school. And at the end of the year, they had roughly 388,000 dollars. And so last Thursday, the school board also said, we'll return that money. That's outside of the 4.17. What's left to be reconciled is the 1.3 and the capital. And to answer your question, I don't think it can be reconciled with the number of days that are left.
And I would add, it's not just a question of reconciling, it's a question of getting everything incorporated into the CAFER, having the auditor have the time to go through and do their final audit steps. They have to get a concurring partner review. They're going to have to update the attorney letter, because they need that done very close to the final date of fieldwork and the date of their opinion. So everything has to come together, and it's a, you know, it's a complex set of parts.
Remember how thick the CAFER is. It's about yathan. And so it's not just going to two separate pages, it goes to different tables that will have to be redone.
I mean, I'm sorry, I am appalled that, I mean, these are not, I use the term, these are not state secrets. These are, these are just numbers on a piece of paper that we should have smart people that know how to, I mean, I don't understand. I'm not bussing at you, I just don't understand why my city has employees with CPA degrees and finance degrees that can't make this work. I think it's...
We can make it work, and I'm appalled.
They have to have the information at hand to pull it together from both sides. If you don't have the information, you cannot balance it if you have inadequate information. And that's something that you have to work with, having come from the student division and worked with the finances. Those things were cleared up at the end of the year before the auditor came in to go through the books.
Well, I can tell you that we've reviewed the school's financial statements, and it's clear to us that this is the amount due. Absent any information that they can provide that we don't have, this is what we're booking, and this is what we consider to be the amount due to the city. The only question is whether they are now going to go back and find additional invoices that they believe should have been charged to last year. And then the auditors will also have to do some testing on that as well.
Shouldn't it be a paper trail far as checks, invoices? I mean, I mean...
Yes, and we've asked for that information.
Some of taxpayers, it's absurd.
What did, I mean, have you spoken to Earl?
Pardon me?
Have you talked, have you spoken to Earl?
Yes.
His, was input or...
Well, I can't speak for Earl. Okay?
I understand.
But you know, at the end of the day, the people suffering are their children that we hear spoke of so often. All this is doing is delaying money being re-appropriated that I think this council and previous councils have a history of doing the right thing and re-appropriating unspent money back to the school. But when you look at the methodology that I'm being told here about funds being put in accounts that are typically used by individual schools fundraisers for the kids, either somebody don't know what in the heck they're doing, accounting 101, or there's a methodology at work that needs to stop. Because it defies the general accounting principles that the auditor has already did a finding on. So when's the message going to get through? You know, we keep getting these briefings. Other people have weighed in on, the courts have weighed in on it, and we keep seeing basically what I describe as a mess, financial mess. So when is this going to get resolved? And somebody say, timeout, either call a team of auditors in to straighten it out and let folks know they have the responsibility for keeping it straight, that their job is to keep it straight and to follow general accounting principles. When's that going to happen? I say that rhetorically. I'm looking for an answer.
I think that you have made a very good point. I think that you have made an offer to try to bring about transparency. And I go back to our conversation that we had in the spring of this calendar year. There does not need to be two finance departments in this building.
If there was ever a time to merge people together to get something done, I...
It's not about control, it's about...
There used to be transparency.
Saving money. We don't need two payroll departments, we don't need two purchasing directors, we don't need two accounts payable department. There would be plenty of room for transparency. And the money that would be saved could be put right back into education. And you're right, Bill.
Wouldn't be a duplication.
Until, there are two issues. One is getting the numbers to jab, what they owe us and what they say they owe us. And then the second issue is the reappropriation of the funds. And your comfort that, yes, that these funds need to be re-appropriated. And it's easy to, and the, all the rhetoric that takes place for the two to get fixed up. But the first task is to get the numbers right.
I mean, we spent the spring trying to put money in the classroom with parent, we spent hours in here talking about paraprofessionals and more teachers and trying to get more money in the classroom to help the children. And we're arguing, we're not arguing, you know, and now we're dealing with four million dollars floating around in strange accounts that nobody seems to know what they are, and textbook funds that don't get used, and, well, it's just ridiculous.
The reason why I asked Carol to put the state code, the state code sections are pretty clear, not pretty clear, they are in fact clear. Unspent money comes back. You can't spend money until it's appropriated. So the money's either spent or not. It's either spent by June 30th, or it's not. And if it's not, then it comes back to the city, and it's available for reappropriation.
Is that understood? Are you sure it's understood? That, because there was a time when that was a process and procedure. At the end of the time, that was an accountability back, you know, to the city. And I'm just trying to figure out when did that stop.
I don't think it's understood, and I'll tell you why. Because I think there was a general feeling up until the recent conversations that you could encumber money from last year and use it to pay this year's light bill. And that, clearly, you can't do. But it was being done.
Being held back.
So this is a status report, and it seems like we've had two nights of not good news. But until we get this resolved...
And we have no authority to force them to do anything. We're just responsible for the CAFER and to the taxpayers.
Right.
I want to make sure I'm right. When they came in, they wanted like $2 million for the paraprofessionals and assistance back in the classroom. Since then, we've discovered they had 8.6 and now another 4, almost equal up to 13 million.
These are truly unspent funds at the end of the year.
And all of them originated, not all in the same year, but all of them originated in the school general fund. Money was transferred, 2.7 million was transferred from the general fund to the school construction fund over a period of two years and was not spent. The 8.4 million was what was remaining at the end of fiscal 13, plus the encumbrances.
If they gave us the 4.1 million dollars back, what would your, how much would you appropriate back? Or what would your suggestion be to us?
My recommendation to you is reappropriate back what they need and can justify that need for. I said that at the beginning, I said it as recent as last week. I have no problem in recommending to you that you reappropriate funds that are justified to be as a need.
Because we're at half of the year. I mean, so if it was a five at the beginning, is it five now or is it two and a half? You know?
But remember, we have two issues here. We have one of getting the books right and understanding what happened last fiscal year that's now six months old.
Does this affect our credit rating?
If we have a finding, it would be...
We need a clean audit.
Right, and that's...
Yeah. And so that's why, you know, I'm not going to certify to you that these fairly represent our financial condition, because that's not, it doesn't. Now, expedient way to do this would be for the schools to say, well, the whole 1.3 million were expenditures, we're not going to take the time to go back to the invoices. Or they say it's unspent funds, but does that really truly give a true snapshot? And...
Say that again. The expedient thing is to do what?
The expedient, one expedient thing to do, if you were on the school side, is to declare the 1.35 unspent funds and return them back to the city. Without going through the paper trail and looking for the invoices and see if these are any expenditures. But if you do that, then you're not really, you're not...
Finding the problem.
You're not fixing the problem.
Not fixing the problem, and you're not, you're not really showing the true... Not fixing the problem and you're not, you're not really showing the true condition of the city, of the school board, of the school operation. And you can come back and do a prior year adjustment for a year that's already been booked and you have the auditor's report. But let me tell you, that's a major finding, not a minor finding, but a major finding. Because the auditor's already issued his opinion that, you know, I'm okay with this financial report, with this caper. And so when you come back and do a adjustment to a previous fiscal year, something's broken.
Yeah, we sure want to get this fixed before we finish the year we're in now. Are we going to be doing this all over again?
To answer Councilwoman Randall's question, I think there is a, there needs to be a better understanding of the term encumbrance and how an encumbrance is used in a budgetary sense.
And it's not uncommon, and the city does this, to liquidate all the encumbrances at the end of the year, except in our case, the ones that relate to capital projects, to get liquidated because everything that really is an expenditure of that year will come through on the accrual process and there really isn't necessarily a need to keep those encumbrances open past June 30th. The idea behind encumbrance is to provide some level of budgetary control. Once the year is over, departments aren't spending against that year and it eliminates the, you know, the kind of confusion that can come up as to what those are.
And let me explain too. We use encumbrances, as Carol just said, for budgetary control and that's what it's about. You issue a purchase order in, let's say, October to buy a pen and you encumber the funds for that purchase so that the funds don't get spent twice. When the invoice comes in, the person certifies that the pen came and it's in working order, then you pay it from that encumbrance. It's a budgetary control item. And to have an encumbrance that goes, that relates to this fiscal year, if this is June 30th, that's still open come 12 months later, just doesn't make any sense at all.
What was the explanation on the money being in the, unspent money in the school textbook fund and also the money in the individual fundraising accounts?
No, no explanation on the student activity funds other than it was unspent funds, which is fair. I mean, I think that's fair. We've got this much money left over.
But that was, but that money came from the general fund, not.
Came from the general fund.
Not through any student activities?
No, no.
So should that money have been in there?
That's a school board call. I mean, they can make that call to allocate that money, but if it's unspent at the, at the end of the year, it should automatically come back to us.
No matter what it is.
Without any questions being asked. Should it, should it not? And that's, that's clear. So that's not the issue. The issue would be to have the money there and not return it back or have the money there and try to shield it from coming back. But that's not the case. It's, it's come back. The 1.3, they have no explanation yet for that. They're working their way through that. And as I said in my memorandum to you, the school board chairman Bridgeford is going to call or has called a meeting for the 12th, not the 12th, Thursday, to see how much work the school's finance has done in order to determine the status of the 1.4 million dollars there.
I mean, did I read your memo right? It sounded like the meeting where Claude Parent and those, the finance meeting he went to, that some of those school board members didn't have a clear picture of this encumbrance situation at all. Is that fair to say?
I think there's a lot of confusion on the part of the school, up and down, encumbrances.
But is there any clarity in terms of how long these funds can be held in abeyance until you put them back in a category or are they a functional for the purpose for which they were set aside from?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we need to look at.
We all operate under what's called GAAP. And it's not a different set of accounting principles and procedures for, for us and for the schools, it's the same. We have the same accrual period or should have the same accrual period and we should treat encumbrances the same way.
I feel like I want to beat my head on a wall.
Yeah, it's like Groundhog Day over and over again.
Yeah, it's muddy.
Two weeks, four weeks ago, the chairman of the school board come up and, I mean, he didn't, he didn't beat us up, but might as well. They still have money out there. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to say. I mean.
The next item, at last night's council meeting, you asked us to re-grant the resolution for your consideration at next Tuesday's call meeting of council, the public hearing on Senator Lucas's proposed legislation. We've done that, it's before you in paper format. We tried to get it out to you this afternoon, we did in fact, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
It's, it's a lot better. I mean, I can live with this one.
Okay.
Just thinking for me. What's your problem?
I have two problems. In the, in the heading at the top, it talks about casino and riverboat gaming.
Okay, yes.
And in, or Senate Bill 19, it's already been filed, there's no riverboat in here. It's all about a building. And somewhere in here, this resolution for us does a wonderful job of talking about toll mitigation, but it doesn't say anything about the 10% for the city of Portsmouth.
Right.
And as far as I'm concerned, that's one of the major reasons I'm supporting this.
That's a.
That's a, that's a big reason to support this.
So we're going to, to part the bill, did we, did we?
I mean, it's called in her bill, it's called a non-reverting fund to be known as the State Local Casino Gaming Proceeds Fund.
Okay.
And to me, that's what we're supporting.
Yep, I agree with you.
In this resolution.
All right.
It's not that we're rah rah casino, it's rah rah funds, toll mitigation and.
Told based on.
State Local Casino Gaming Proceeds Fund.
Yeah.
Right.
That was a earmark specifically for tolls.
That's right.
Toll mitigation.
Yeah, the 90% is for the toll mitigation and the 10% is for the local casino gaming proceeds fund.
Right.
Any other comments? We'll get another.
Well, I think all you got to do is pick out that riverboat gambling and add that.
And add that in.
What's she just, the statement from the bill? We're good?
It's in Article 7 of the bill, George, if you want to take the words right out of her bill.
All right, we'll make those changes and give it to you, Mark. All right? Next item is a product of a meeting that Nita attended. She went last week to last week's meeting of the Commonwealth Transportation Board in Richmond.
Okay.
And ended up having conversations with VDOT Commissioner, Greg Worley, and members of his staff. And Nita, would you come up? What you're about to hear has been stalled by, by at least some, is thrown in the towel. Well, what you're about to hear is a proposal that we assist VDOT in selling the transponders. It's not saying we quit, that we're for tolls. Tolls right now are coming February. And if you don't have a transponder, you pay the highest price possible for tolling. And you have expressed a concern about the burden that tolls place on our citizens and there's no need, if they're going to pay tolls, pay the lowest toll. And I'm not surprised that the reaction of maybe even some of you or the citizens would be, this is, you know, this is retreating or this is getting in bed with the enemy. Well, it's not that. It's not that at all. It's an effort to help our citizens get the transponders and get them at a place that they often come to. And that is City Hall and other places where they pay bills to the city. Will you brief counsel on this, please?
Thank you very much. John, heated up pretty well, but I do want to make you aware of an article that you should have in front of you, which actually summarized Commissioner Conauton's or Chairman Conauton's, I guess dissatisfaction with VDOT's pace in getting the information out. In the CTV meeting, VDOT gave a presentation about their plans for getting the transponders out in Hampton Roads. And because of the lawsuit, after talking with Commissioner Worley, they had to delay that activity. But there was still a lot of criticism about the pace at which VDOT is moving. If a person goes through the tunnel after February 1st without a transponder, the cost to them, which they will receive an invoice in the mail, it would be over $5 for a one-way trip through the tunnel. VDOT is actually trying to get out 75,000 transponders between now and February 1st, but their campaign doesn't even actually start until almost mid-January with, with the schedule that they gave to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. That, I believe, puts our residents at a real big disadvantage. So in talking with VDOT, we've come up with some ways that we can help mitigate this problem and at least reduce the impact to our residents. And that's on this sheet that I have here and I want to cover some of those things with you, some of those items. So the plan is that pretty much the city treasurer would become the retailer. He would be able to sell the transponders here at City Hall and as well as the treasurer's location in Churchland. Right now, VDOT does not have any facility planned for the northern part of the city at all. They have a facility planned to open in January at Victory Crossing and they have one, I think, at Port Center. But the northern part of Portsmouth, they, they don't have anything planned. The city would purchase the transponders for a total of $31.25 each and then sell them for $35. That only gives the city about $3.75 to cover any cost of labor, inventory costs, carrying costs, et cetera, for these transponders. And when the transponders are sold, they're automatically loaded with $15 available for the commuter to actively use at that time. So they could walk out of here and put it in the windshield and go straight through the tunnel and it would deduct the toll. But once they reached $20 in toll fees, they are definitely required to register that transponder. So we want people to register the transponder with VDOT immediately, but you have up to that $20 limit. You can register by either going online or the customer could call VDOT. So our citizens who don't have access to computers can actually still register their transponder and then work with VDOT to continue to load that, that transponder. Some key points is that the city can stop or start the sale of transponders at any time. We're not obligated to continue to do this and, and that will be Jimmy's responsibility, Mr. Williams's responsibility. I spoke with him and he has agreed that he's interested in doing this. They do require the execution of a retailers agreement. That will be going to Mr. Wilson's department as well as to an attorney that Mr. Williams has under retainer to review. And the city can order a minimum of 10, they prefer increments of 25, and in talking with Mr. Williams, he's going to order an initial quantity of about 1,000. Keep in mind, the goal is to, they really need to sell about 75,000 between now and February 1st with a goal of an additional 100,000 between now and June. So the city treasurer is going to really aggressively work to try to get these out and available by the first of the year to our citizens. VDOT, their role, they've agreed to provide interior display boards for us, interior banners. They've also talked about providing exterior banners, but they want to know just what we would like to have, they're willing to work with us on that. And they're also going to work with ERC about posting our locations on the electronic boards. That's a discussion that they're willing to have with ERC and they're going to encourage that activity. And VDOT can get us set up within a week if we choose to do so, but I think it will take the city treasurer's office a little bit longer than a week to get all of his internal controls in place. There are some open action items that we would have to implement very quickly in order to get this up and going. The inventory system for the control units is a big one because they are live, we purchase them, we own them if they're stolen, we have that loss. They, we look, Jimmy wants to look at sales controls, review of the contract, and then also he needs to really work with Carol to set up the accounts for this. Finally, on the city side, in terms of the city manager's office and marketing, we would be working with the treasurer to work with VDOT and ERC to market these things and to get some advertising for the city. That definitely would not come out of our budget, but out of VDOT's budget.
Would we sell these to like Western Branch, North Suffolk people too?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, anybody that.
Anybody that's coming through.
Right. And I recommend that we do this. I think this is a good idea because, again, I think our first concern ought to be, don't pay that high a toll if there's an alternative.
I'm just impressed we can do it for $3 a thing. You figure it's going to take the girl at least 10 minutes, we're going to have ink, paper, and a lawyer to review it. That's pretty impressive.
Oh, I think, what scares me is that we need to get 75,000 out in the field and this is 1,000 and I know he can reorder, but.
I'm more concerned about the 95,000 people who live in Portsmouth.
Portsmouth, yeah.
And they all don't have cars, so.
Yeah.
Let's assume that 40,000 have cars. I want them to have transponders.
I wonder how many people in Portsmouth already have transponders?
I have no idea.
Somebody must know that.
Can we, if we haven't done so, can we put the locations where they can get easy passes in Portsmouth?
For this one?
Obviously, including, I think there's consensus to do the treasurer's thing, but also, you know, the information that we have here.
VDOT said that they would, once they had a formal agreement with us, it would be on their website. Right now, there's only one location in Portsmouth.
The Jordan Bridge?
I beg your pardon?
At the Jordan Bridge, right?
It's Port Center, I think.
Somewhere down here.
Just down, so there's only one location.
The guy's selling them every day at Victory Boulevard into the Jordan Bridge. Every day he's out there.
But ERC has one at.
Port Center Borough, at their office.
So if we buy these 1,000, they're ours. Whether we sell them or not, they're ours? Or is there a return policy?
We can return.
And they'll give us our $31.25 back?
But I'm almost certain we will probably sell, that's a starting number that Mr. Williams.
I understand, but the whole impetus is whatever's balanced, if we don't sell them, we're not going to be left holding the city.
We're not going to encumber that money.
We're not going to.
They're right, they're right.
Okay, consensus?
Sorry?
I think the mayor.
We done with this?
Mayor's going to tell you about it.
All right, I got some brief. All right, I got some brief, good news here. Tomorrow, I'll be flying out to Baton Rouge, Louisiana for the Mayor's Institute on City Design.
Yes.
And I actually submitted Portsmouth with a whole bunch of other cities in this process. It's actually underwritten by the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And what they have at LSU is a brain trust, if you will, of people dealing with climate change, flooding, a whole gamut of things. And they've got a program where cities can apply, and you can pick a project within your city, and you can go before this board, and they actually have other experts coming in to work with them. And they'll actually compare, I think it's 10 of us mayors that are gonna be presenting a project there, and then they'll select which ones they like, and they'll have all of these experts come and give us all these great ideas on what they would do. And one of the things that I thought of, and I thought it was neat, and they break it up in segments so the smaller cities aren't having to compete with the middle ones or the larger ones. And so the cities that are coming here are all around about our size. And we actually picked, and we had a couple of opportunities, but the Paradise Creek and the work that we've done over here at the nature park with the Jordan Bridge now open, that's a major gateway to our city. And if any of you ever come across there and look at the challenges that we have there, and again, it is about our image and what we do. We've also have concerns about historic craddock, some of the issues that we have there with a redevelopment piece, as well as talking with the Jordan Bridge folks. I talked with Linda Fig a while back. They're concerned about some of the traffic signals and timing and how in doing rush hour, we can get that flow along Victory Boulevard. I just thought it was a great opportunity to be able to submit that to them because what they want is challenges. They want stuff like environmental, which we've got. The challenge of, it's Navy-owned property. We've got historic as well as some other things. We've got everything in here, but if you look in this book that they just sent me yesterday, the other cities have got some very good challenging projects as well. So anyway, I'll be going to submit that and present in front of this body, and they'll actually select one of our cities. And I don't know, I guess we could probably, Bob, you mentioned that you know a little bit about this in the past, and maybe there's some opportunities for some future. Maybe we can get the government to get us some grant money to say, hey, we presented before this group. They selected Portsmouth, and they gave us all these great ideas. And now can we get some money to go with this?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, the program you mentioned, it's been in existence since 1986. And so they do, seven or eight of these programs are in the course of a year. They've had over 900 mayors have gone through the program over time. Yes, I think the whole goal is you bring a mix. First of all, all the mayors that are invited will sit on the panel so you get to observe other communities going through the same process, as well as having those mayors with their experience and their localities comment. And then you do have a panel of experts. That's correct, you'll have coastal experts, you'll have design experts. And quite frankly, I think from what, you know, the Paradise Creek project, be one of the more challenging ones that they'll have to try to get their arms around. Because whichever direction you want to go, there's an issue to get into. And then hopefully, depending on what you come back with, hopefully, there'll be some opportunities and then to pursue that down the road and see if there's, you know, what sort of next steps you might get into as far as the Paradise Creek quarter.
And the deliverables or the outcomes from this, a couple of things. One, you get to brag on your city with some of the stuff you're doing and some of the challenges and have some people coming from outside. Actually, one of the professors, the guy that's heading it up, Professor Corny at LSU, flew here to Portsmouth about two weeks ago, and we actually showed him Paradise Creek, took him around and the whole thing, and so he's a little excited. But he seemed like the kind of guy would get excited with any of these projects because they just like delving in. And, you know, in Baton Rouge and Louisiana, they're experts with all of those types of challenges.
What other projects were eligible?
Oh, anything. You could pick anything. I mean, I could've went to Churchland. Yeah, but they want environment. And just to give you some idea with the panelists and the folks here, they've got a urban, a principal urban person. You got a regional director here from a big organization in urban planning.
It'd be nice if we had a copy of that so we could look through it.
I can get you a copy of all that. But anyway, they've got an, and they got architects, they've got landscapers, climate change folks. It's a whole team of folks that will look at it. And so I think that's why they wanted an area like this that had all those challenges. And I think this area meets all of that. And hopefully, we can use some, get some of their ideas and be able to put it to place and hopefully get some money. Do we know of many of them that's got any federal funds after going through this process?
I couldn't answer off the top of my head. We certainly find out what people have done this.
Well, we'd be excited to find out. But anyway, so, and again, all of these cities are roughly the same. There's a couple in here. There's one here in Louisiana, has only have about 38,000 citizens, but most of them are between 50 and 100,000.
All places down there in Louisiana.
But anyway, so stay tuned with that. But we're excited about it because, again, if nothing else, we get to tout some of the good stuff that's going on with Paradise Creek, with that whole cleanup effort and what we're doing there. And they're looking for success stories too. So anyway, and I want to thank the staff for helping me with this, and hopefully I can present this in a manner that they'll say they want to take on Portsmouth. Anybody got anything else?
I just have one thing. You know, there was a time that as members of council, we went to many of the state meetings and the other state national meetings where we kept abreast with the trends and things that were going on. In fact, Charles was the one who opened the doors where we went through, and they had an ambassadors group that many of the people went to and received certifications. You can shift your paradigm and open the perimeters of what you look at when you attend many of these areas in terms of things you can do within your city. At one time, we did a beautiful job, or if you remember, of looking out beyond where we were and projecting where we wanted to go in the future for our city. Somehow, we stopped doing that and just started thinking, concentrating on the city. The other cities that are locked in, and we are landlocked, are branching out, and outstanding things are taking place. But if we stay complacent in where we are sitting, we never get an opportunity to find out that's what's going on outside of your gates. And the only way you can do that is go to these meetings and meet with some of the people that are going there. And there are some people that have not been to any of the state meetings. And I would highly suggest and recommend that you go because while sometimes we think we know it all, there's so much more that's happening right around us and right across the waters from us. And I would like for us to think in terms of shifting our paradigm and spreading out and taking those things that we can embrace to enhance the quality of life in Portsmouth and move it and not think about me, mine, I. Portsmouth is a family of people with dreams and aspirations, and all of them want things better in this area. I've seen some changes, but I'm seeing some things now that I'm not too happy about because we are not looking out beyond where we are sitting. And we are landlocked where we can't go anywhere. So we're gonna have to look at ways of doing more with what the areas are that we're having to work with, and others will come on board. And I just said in my heart that I felt as if we needed to shift our paradigm. Doesn't matter which member of council brings the idea in. It ought to be received as a potential. And if you have not been to any of the state meetings, let me suggest that you go into some of these meetings so you can shift your paradigm and see what other areas are doing.
You're referring to the National League of Cities?
The National League of Cities.
Virginia Municipal League.
And the Virginia Municipal League.
And all of those.
I think about the fact that Charles Whitehurst was the only one who went through from this council and completed that ambassador's award.
All the way through.
All the way through. I have gotten my ambassador's award. Some of it, in order to help you to think through, you need to shift your paradigm. Everything is like happening within this borderlines of Portsmouth. And if we're talking about making our city grow, we need to think more granular in looking at things and not just about here because the perimeters here are gonna change. So we just need, I just want us to be futuristic in what do we want Portsmouth to look like. And Sheri Neal's been keeping me on target, and I've been up and down the road with her, with Virginia First Cities and other cities around. Some of us have never been to a meeting to know what is going on in other areas. And I think we need to make that a part of our grooming for what we want our future roles to look like. And I just had to throw it out.
You can know what you don't know.
That's right. You can do it if you don't go and listen to it.
That's a good point. And that was one of the reasons why I applied for this. I just wanted to see if they would select us. And they called me back and said, hey, we've selected Portsmouth. And I actually wanted to do it to brag on some of the stuff that we had because when I went to the, a couple of years ago, and we won the EPA Award, to actually go to Washington, D.C. and actually talk to some of these other city planners and mayors, and they actually saw what we did and the major undertaking we did with the codes and rewriting and all that. They were stunned that we were able to do stuff like that. And then talking with some of the other cities and watching them present, it does give you ideas with challenges of what they went in. But sometimes it'll start running together, and you'll start hearing the same things. But you're right, Ms. Randall, it is as important that we attend these things and get engaged so we can bring back fresh ideas. So, very good point. Okay, anybody got anything else?
Yes, sir. One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
In front of council members, you have the proposed statement for me to read for speakers. George had previously provided that to you, and you all wanted to talk about it during your session tonight.
Okay.
And it would be helpful for us if we got the council okay. The main part that you're looking at is the second paragraph. The first paragraph is what I already said.
Why don't you just read it out loud?
I'll just read the second part since you're used to the first part. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Sounds good to me.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say publicly. Part of this, and I copied all of you on this. I asked the city attorney last week because I had frankly gotten, by the time I got the fifth phone call from a citizen who was very upset that a speaker at council meeting had threatened us with the wrath of God.
That's for sure.
And the citizen said to me, why didn't the mayor call her out? I said, the mayor cannot call her out. Speakers have a right to freedom of speech. And, you know, the speaker at the council meeting didn't threaten us with a fist or a gun or a chain that particular night. And so I think, I really liked what George came back with, that there is a fine line of freedom of speech, but you can't go gaveling somebody down just because you don't like what they say. But there is something to be said for the decorum. The tone and decorum in a public forum where we're supposed to be discussing public policy.
That's right.
And I, Mayor, I hope you know, I will absolutely support you in trying to keep that tone civil in this meeting.
Well, it's been allowed to, the chair does have, when somebody curses or engages in a personal attack of a personal nature, the chair does have, under Robert's rules of order, to call the point of order. In fact, our chair has done that.
Right, we've done that, right.
I think to George's point, just obviously invoking the wrath of God on someone, that's a fine line of, I guess, church and state or whatever, that, you know, you don't want to have to do that.
Yeah.
You would expect them to be...
I like belligerent, sarcastic, and demeaning.
At least respectful.
Just to emphasize the point, it's not the content at all that you're seeking to... I wouldn't say regulate because you're not, you're just, to maintain a proper air, respectful air that, for instance, young children who may be watching this, if their other channels aren't available, but if they happen to be watching a meeting or happen to be sitting in a room with their parents who are watching a meeting, and they see what's going on, they see it's conducted properly. That's always the goal of good government, is for everyone to respect the government, even if they may disagree with what the government decides.
Is council okay with this statement?
Yeah, no, this is fine.
Everybody's...
It's fine.
I just want to be able to note, council...
You watch, if you travel out, and I don't know how many of you do this and go in your hotel rooms when you travel, but I turn to the local channels, and it's all over. When I was up in Portsmouth, Rhode Island, I watched Newport, Rhode Island. I watched about three different networks there, and they had some of the same people that we had. When I went out to Las Vegas, there was about three people out there in Las Vegas. And I didn't know Cox was way out there, but Cox Cable carried it. And I'm sitting in the hotel room, and it's, and it is, it's something that, again, it struck the chord with the stability accord that we tried to do a couple of years ago that the president had kind of mentioned to all of the mayors that we go back to see if we can't try to, you know, do something in a fashion that doesn't keep people from expressing their feelings and their concerns to the council, but making sure that it's done in a civil manner. And that's where it becomes tough. But I like this, and we'll read this at the beginning of the... Okay, anything else?
We need a next, a close.
We got a motion for a close, right? Okay, somebody want to take us into close?
I'm going to go into closed meeting pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose: Consultation with legal counsel in briefing by staff pertaining to probable litigation. Where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the litigating process of the city is permitted under subsection A7. And consideration of appointees to city boards and commissions is permitted under subsection A1.
One second.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds is absent. Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simms?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.